Oh, yeah. Introduce some around there. You're gonna need. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the. Good Lord, October two thousand twenty four zoning board of appeals meeting. My name is Kelly Donovan. I'm the chair of this board. For those of you who've never attended one of our meetings. I'll quickly explain how the meeting is conducted. First, we'll ask the applicant to come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. And discuss the proposed project or request for variance. The floor will then be open for anyone who would like to speak in favor or against the proposed project. Once everybody's had an opportunity to speak, the public hearing will be officially closed and no. No new testimony can be taken after the public hearings have been held. Board will deliberate and make a decision on each case. You're welcome to stay through the deliberations, but again, no input is permitted. And tonight is a little bit different. We're not going to actually be able to open any specific public hearings because there was some. Confusion about the posting dates and whatnot, so. Tonight is going to be mainly informational. Informational gathering. One of the applicants I see you up there came back with some feedback from our questions from last month. Other applicants are going to be welcome to discuss your project. We will not be able to go through the official public hearing and vote on any decisions, but we we will have some discussions of your applications. I hope that makes sense to everybody. But to keep this thing rolling along, the zoning board of appeals, a five member board tonight, we have four members present. And that constitutes a quorum. I will now call the role. Mr. Matzo. Ms. Bucci. Mr. Landers. Mr. Donovan is present and Ms. Resonetti is excused. Minutes from last month. Do you guys all get a chance to look at them? Okay, any corrections? Deletions? Anything like that? Is there a motion to approve as written? I have a motion. Could I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you very much. And. Okay. Now, again, we're not. None of this is going to be a public hearing, but we want to hear your concerns and issues involved with each case. So the first case on our docket for tonight is like good to good go with the. Is one eighty eight Court Street. FGR Realty LLC area variance to allow no landscape buffer around the southeast sides of a parking lot where a buffer is required. Around the entire perimeter in the C one service commercial district. Is that applicant here?
So so given the fact that there won't be a vote on this case, the applicant chose not to come and they'll be coming to the next meeting. This is an unlisted action, so the board can declare themselves lead agency, declare this unlisted action and schedule a public hearing and then move on to the next case.
Or could do that once when we see him in person either or. So I would probably also have to forget by wait until we see. See their eyes. Is that okay with somebody?
It's fine with me.
We will defer that action till till we see them in person. It's a case on the docket.
Sorry, you'll need a motion to table. Sorry.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I need a motion to table one eight. We're speaking to the next.
Motion to table one eighty eight Court Street.
Okay, second. All in favor?
All right.
Hi, thank you very much. Second case, thirty five Grand Boulevard. Siad Sidiki. Use variance for conversion of the ground floor of an existing mixed use building into two dwelling units. And these are two residential one and two unit dwelling district. Come on down. I'll remind everybody that we did. Speak to. Month and we sent him with some more. In August, thank you very much. We did. We missed last month. Time flies. You got. You got the green light? Okay, and speak as closely as you're comfortable. We can't quite hear you.
Is the green light on?
You have to let go. There you go.
Good afternoon. Honorable Chair. Chairman and board members. My name is Si Siddiq. And I'm a police officer of New York City Housing Authority. Actually, I had the last meeting on August thirteenth and there is some recommendation about the project, so. And I took the recommendation and I have changes, a lot of changes. So. I've submitted my planning with the two minutes. The first unit, so this is the over. Be of the. Planning. Entrance to the unit features the Grand Avenue. They need include three bedrooms, one full size bathroom. Along with one half bathrooms. Two bathrooms are equipped their own closet while third one can function as a either bedroom or an office. The full bathroom strategic between the two bedrooms and one bathroom located between the light most bedroom. They need also feature a bar like. Opening facing the living room and a more open kitchen layout, which includes a closet with built in primary. And in storage area. So this layout if it could utilize the daylight. Because the residential window is size thirty six by forty eight. This is in it one. And in it number two, this is entrance to the through Highland Street and they need to impose two bedrooms. Which. Each with one closet and residential windows that provides ample of natural light. A full bathroom. It's located between the bedrooms. They're located also in cupboard bar like opening that concept the kitchen to the living room. Balance storage in the middle hallway and spacer built in closet, paint and kitchen. I mean, this is the perfect. Architectural plans for two in the residentials. And even any question, I'm here to answer the question too.
I got a question for staff. Tito, did you guys get a chance to review the submitted changes?
We did, yeah. So now it's one, two unit bedroom. To the south and one, three unit bedroom in that northern apartment.
So the. Previous application was how many beds? Total?
Can I answer this?
Yeah.
Yeah, previous. My previous was the four bedrooms, four bedrooms. Previous one.
Four, four and four.
Four and four each.
Okay, and now it's two and three?
Two and three. Two, actually, one could be used as an office or bedroom as it is. So actually. One side is two bedroom and. One bedroom is there, it can be function as a bedroom or an office space. And another side is two bedrooms.
Okay. The members of the board have any questions for the applicant?
Parking. Is there a large enough parking area for this?
A parking I have. I have a easement with. I mean, it's the city of Birmingham and twenty six Grand Boulevard. I have a nine parking spot over here.
Is that is that the same agreement we were looking at last last time we got together?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's the one you had some that you had some concerns.
So when we open the public hearing up at the next meeting.
Yes.
We will hear from the owner of that property regarding the easement.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
To just to clarify one thing, the one unit that he's saying is two beds and an office. Typically, the way. The planning department treats rooms that could be used as a bedroom, we just assume that. As at at some point in the future, they'll become a bedroom, so. When you're looking at that, you should be looking at at that as a three bedroom. And if that's something that the board's not. Comfortable with. Then the floor plan would be tweaked so that that office space would. Either not have. You know, would have an open wall or something that would prevent it from being a bedroom in the future. All right, so this is technically a five bedroom. Facility. Yep, one, two bedroom, one, three bedroom. So it could house ten people there. Two persons per bedroom. Correct? That's city code, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, yeah, in the zoning code, there's no, there's technically no limit on how many people can share a bedroom in the zoning code. I'm not sure if the. If the building and code is a different standard, but.
But in practice, it's usually it's going to be two. Bags.
We didn't we never make that assumption, I guess.
All right, any other questions for the applicant? No, okay. Thank you for coming back. Thank you for making changes and. At this point, what I would normally do is open the public hearing for this. But what I'm going to. Alternately do is you can go back to your seat now. Is ask neighbors, people here that are want to express their opinions about this project. Feel free to come forward one at a time. You come up and. Is that okay to do it that way? It is not a it's not officially part of the. Public hearing, but. You guys came out and we'd like to hear what you have to say.
How you doing? I'm the owner of twenty six twenty eight Grand Boulevard. Name is Brzowski Anthony.
Hi, Anthony.
I just have one thing to say and I'll get the information to Tito tomorrow. I have a long list of things for. This. Planning board. One thing I want to say is. He thinks he has an easement. He does not.
Are you talking about the parking?
The parking. He does not have any valid easement to my property. He might have a piece of paper stating he does. But under New York State. My property. I bought the property on March tenth nineteen eighty nine. I recorded my deed the same day. I own the property. The deed for the easement or the easement was recorded on March sixteenth nineteen eighty nine. I was not a party to this at all. It has to be recorded simultaneously to be a valid easement. When a property owner buys a piece of property is an easement. There was never an easement there because the person who bought thirty five Grand Boulevard. When I was trying to buy twenty six Grand Boulevard was Jeff Feinberg. Jeff was denied his planning through this planning board in nineteen eighty nine because he wanted to put student housing in there. Dave Chadwick denied it. Jeff said, I don't need the parking anymore. So I said, okay. I'll take it. So I took the parking. There was no easement. I don't know who put that easement up six days later. But it was after I owned the property. So you cannot do that because I was not a party to it. So that easement is was a mistake or an error by somebody. Who took it up there to have it recorded. And I have a lot of more information for Tito. I'll give it to him tomorrow. But I want you to be aware of that.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd invite anybody else present who came to discuss this to come on down.
Hi, my name is Eileen Heslin. I live at thirty Grand Boulevard. My husband and I have lived there for. Forty six years now. One of the things that I don't think that we need in our neighborhood is more student housing. I know it hasn't been. Stated that that's what this would be used for, but. We do have student housing next door to us with the sixth family that Tony Brzowski owns. I do have to say that we were. Not happy when that went in, but he has always been very careful about who he rents to. And we have never had a problem with any of the students. He also has a manager in the building, which I think makes a difference. And he was very cognizant of how the neighbors felt about having students move in. So I I think that. Student housing with an absentee landlord is not a good mix. My other concern is. If it, no matter what the plan is for the housing, again, with with there not being anyone there to monitor things, the previous owner of this property, the most recent owner. Was also from out of town and I talked with him when he first bought the property and he told me he was hoping. To rent out the. Office space of the apartment. That did not work out and he was having no luck having anyone in there. And. He put the property up for sale. It didn't sell. And the next, the the sign was still up, but the next thing I knew, because I had signed up a long time ago for notices from the. Broom County Sheriff's Office. For sex offenders and other people that might move into the neighborhood that you would want to know about, and I got a notice saying that. We had a released sex offender living at thirty five Grand Boulevard, room eight, and I said to my husband, room eight. So, long story short, he was running an illegal boarding house there.
That was the previous owner.
Yes, it was the previous owner. But this was right under everyone's nose. And I am the one who brought it to the attention of the city. That this was going on. And I do have to say the city was very responsive, but it took us. With the help of the city, probably a good six months or more. Before all of those people were gone and it was like a revolving door. You just never knew who was going to be moving in there and. For the taxes that any of us who live on Grand Boulevard pay, I don't think. That we need to have undesirable people like that living in our neighborhood. I am not saying that that is what this gentleman would have. But. I just get very concerned about putting multiple people into a unit. And having no oversight.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor or against? Come on down.
My name is John Patterson. I live at one eighty four Helen Street, which is three houses away from across the street from the property you're considering. I don't have opinion on. On that, what I do have is and because I know how lacking the city is in code enforcement. And there's way behind time. They don't have enough people to take care of it. I am very concerned that when he does the construction and he builds firewalls between all units and all the way through from the basement to the roof. And that's what I don't know if he's considered at, but that's a lot bigger expense and I think the city should make sure that's all done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else feel free to come on down? I will remind you since we're going to have a public hearing. Next time we get together on this, which will be. Twenty eighth, maybe that you'll also be able to speak then. When we when we do have the public hearing, we'll remind everyone of the. Made. You're you're welcome to come back and. Make mention of your concerns. Next time.
Okey dokey.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Peg Shield. And my husband and I live at twenty seven Grand Boulevard. Which is right around the corner from this location. My question in listening to this description. Are there architectural drawings on this?
There are drawings.
I really couldn't. I'm a little confused about how you want to take that space. And make it into what? How many bedrooms?
I believe they're talking a total of five for this one.
Five bedrooms on one floor. In a house that was really designed as a duplex. Right? Is that correct?
The the original house is a duplex.
Right.
But these two units would be going into the commercial addition that's on the on the back of the.
So we're making this into a commercial piece of property.
It's it's been a commercial.
Okay. But that's what he wants to continue?
No.
A commercial?
No, he's asking. He's asking to convert the use from commercial, which it was a dentist's office. To convert that approved use of a commercial as a dentist's office to a residential. To so it could be residential apartment essentially.
So he wants to take a house that was designed as a duplex.
There was there was an addition built onto this house, which was the business, the dentist's office.
Right.
That part. Is being divided into the two units. That he wants to make into rental.
And he has parking spaces for all of this?
That's part of that's part of the concern.
So again, you understand he wants to have one unit with three bedrooms in it. And you said. You you, there's no way that you have three people living there. You could have six people living there. Is that correct?
Could be more.
Could be more, okay.
Could be more.
And you have parking spaces for all these people? Right? Yes?
Yeah, that's that's one of the concerns that we're they were pressing.
I think that's a big issue. Because Helen Street is very, very busy. It's, you know, it's got an elementary school at the corner. So it always has lots and lots of cars. So anyway, that's my concern.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming, Peg. Come on down.
I feel for the gentleman. But. I've through my career with City of Birmingham doing student housing, I've been in it forty years. And I've had to knock down garages. I've had to do all kinds of work to get my properties passed through the planning board, through the code and everything else. And I just want to make it clear that. I understand what he wants. He thinks the easement is legitimate and I'm hoping. Everybody here understands it's not. So there is a parking issue. Okay, and I don't want to. Make it menial or anything, but. He will not park in my parking lot. He will take me to court and he will lose. Because it is not a legal. Easement is not, it's illegitimate. Because it was done after the fact when I owned the property. So I just want to make that point that he cannot have any parking spots there. And if he thinks he can, he's going to have to take me to court. And I will have his cars towed. Just to let everybody know here, because I've gone through all this stuff with the city. I did a big project on two thirteen Shenango Street and Tito remembers that. And it was massive and I had to go through all kinds of stuff, jump through all kinds of hoops for the city and I did it. So he has to find a way to get parking somewhere. That it doesn't infringe on anybody else's parking. And it has to be legitimate parking and has to be legal. And he doesn't have that one mind. And I just want the city to understand that, that he does not have the parking with me.
You'll be able to look at the paperwork he's got.
Thank you.
I appreciate I appreciate the input. Thank you. Anybody else wish in favor or against the proposed project? Okay. Then at this point. At this point, what I would normally do is close the public hearing, but since we didn't open it, I'm going to move on to. Any.
We need to table.
Brief discussion before we table. Anything else we needed to. Cover before we table the next. Nope. Can I make a motion to table the discussion on thirty five Grand Boulevard to our next meeting? Could I get a second? I see a second, all in favor?
All right.
You'll be seeing notice about that coming out, probably what a week before. A week before, so keep an eye out for it. Okay, thank you. Sure, come on up here and ask your question.
Actually, I'm looking for not to ran to student. This is the complete residential unit, so. This is the whole thing is that I'm looking for. So. If there will be two in it added, so.
What you're saying is you're not targeting student.
No, not at all, because. Of student, you need to be a special farm permission for that probably. But this area doesn't allow to rent this to the students.
I'm I'm not sure that in the eyes of the city, there's is there a difference?
In this zoning district, you can dwelling units have to be occupied by related people. You can't rent to an unrelated group of people. And so whatever tenants. He puts in these units would have to be a family or or be the equivalent of a family.
So isn't this?
That's technically for all all occupants.
Okay.
In the R one and R two, you have to be a family or the equivalent of a family and their tests that can be met. Doesn't have to be blood relatives, but.
Members of the public here, are you aware of what we're talking about? Our dwelling unit have. It's to be considered a family unit. And that's the that can be the difference of. Multiple room student dwellings versus a family unit. So. I appreciate your input. Thank you.
You're welcome, sure.
Okay, so keep your eyes open for the next meeting. And move right along. We have thirteen Air Street. An area variance for the paving of a parking lot with no landscape buffer. We're a five foot wide landscape buffer is required for new parking areas in the R three multi unit. Calling district. Hi. Applicants.
Good evening.
Hi, could you state your name and address for the record?
Yep, well, Paul, you're the owner.
Yeah. My name is Paul Mangreenham. I represent Amicus Properties.
Hi, Paul. Jump right into it.
But so the purpose of this project is to maximize off street parking. There are. Five. Parking spots proposed within the existing. Lot. The subject property and the neighboring property do have. A nine foot right away. In between. So. Basically, the idea here is to orient the parking strip being in such a way that we're maximizing. Cars that are not parking on the street. So there's no. Physical. Changes to the property being proposed here. It's really just the orientation of the parking.
Okay.
I I have a question.
Go right ahead.
Okay, great. I see there's a concrete slab there.
Yes.
Why don't we have that parking at that angle instead of it being next to the garage? Or the other property? That looks to me like that would be large enough to put the parking there. Instead of a parking spot right next to that garage?
Yeah, that we had the angled spots in there to to maximize the number of space.
I I understand that, but it looks like there's enough room on that. You got twenty two point nine five feet.
Oh, I see. One more.
Wait, make that angle instead of it being right next to the neighbors.
Yeah. Mike actually considered that. My my concern though was a vehicle backing out of that space and hitting the garage. Right, the the northwest corner of the garage there.
I mean, it's a shared driveway, correct?
Correct.
And I'm I'm kind of having a concern with, since it's a shared driveway. Instead of them being able to turn and come out straight, it looks like they might pull in, then back out and someone's coming in.
Yep.
That's that's my concern with that. Other than that, I have. I don't see an issue with this, just. Right on top of the other person's property garage, you know, it's you don't have your five-foot buffer. That's my only concern.
Yeah, I think, you know, looking at laying this out, it's it's already kind of tough for vehicles to turn around in in the existing area. So I think as it is now, you're kind of looking at backing out.
Seems to me like they're gonna have to back in, to be honest with you, because it doesn't look like there's gonna be enough room to turn around to come out. Unless you're backing into the other person's property.
Yeah, it would have to be.
Which should be in front of the garage.
Either back in or back out.
So you're trying to get five parking spots in behind the house?
Correct.
Are those? I can't read, but it's very. What do you want? How how wide are the spots?
Nine.
Nine, nine by eighteen.
Kind of a standard spot?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
How many? How many cars are you parking there now?
I want to say right now there's like four already parking there now, but it would be a a to add the extra one here, yes, they would have to back in or back uh back out. But they still have difficulty moving around with the angles. Nobody's locked in. Space of blocked in with this layout. With the four that try to park in there now, uh, it's tight. Because they try to park alongside the house where the snow shelf would be and then along and then they try to fit three on that slab. That was an old garage that had been taken down prior to us purchasing the property. It was a tight to try to put three cars there. So you would put the two and then one alongside the house and then one alongside where the they're on an angle.
Let's see that.
Had to go right there.
Easier to see down the paper, I think.
I'm looking at the picture.
I got the pictures too.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Okay.
Right, that's what I'm looking at. So it's a shared drive?
Yes, we own the driveway. They have we have a they have a right-of-way next door to us. To get onto there, a slice with their two-car garages, which is still standing, but I don't think it's actually occupied because it's. It just. And they park behind their house and then back back in or they they pull out as well back out to the street from their side.
So in practice, if this setup were in place, people probably people being the way they are. They would pull in and then they would back out into the neighbors back.
Most likely, most likely, because it's pretty wide right there.
Not into the neighbors, but back out into.
Back out into the street.
I I I think knowing how people behave, you may want to consider speaking to the neighboring property.
Yeah.
About.
We already have a good relationship and I take care of the.
It's great to have a good relationship, but it's also very good to get stuff in writing, too.
I got you.
Yeah, other otherwise I wouldn't have an issue. I mean.
Now, what the one concern that that I also have here is. It it sounds like is where the garage used to be at the back of the lot? How is there? Yeah.
Yes.
Is there any thought into controlling runoff or rainwater?
There's a knee wall and the water goes out towards the street. And around in between the houses, uh, the back, the side, the side house on your. If you're looking at the bottom of the page, the house on the right, there's a grass and driveway that goes out to Chapin. And then the other rest of the runoff goes out towards the street.
Okay.
And it's not paved. The this rest of this area, millings and gravel.
You have to speak into the mic a little bit.
I'm sorry, the the driveway itself, the just ninety or eighty percent of the driveway is millings and gravel. So it's not a paved, so it's it's porous that some of that rain goes through into the ground.
Is that acceptable, that type of driveway?
Anything that's going to be used to meet a parking requirement has to be paved with a with a permanent paving material, asphalt or concrete papers.
So that what he's describing would not be.
Millings would not be.
Pass code.
Would not be would not comply with the zoning code, no.
If I have to pave it, I'll pave it.
There are some permeable pavings. I'm I've not had the best experience in looking at what they have available. I don't know about other people's experience, but. Just something to keep in mind.
I put some some pervious paving bricks.
Yes.
Actually, I came before the board for one oh five. Murray, and we put those pavers and that works out fantastic. So if that's something I need to do for the parking areas.
That might be something to consider going forward. Okay.
I I have another question. So. Am I reading this right? So that your part, this is a shared drive?
Shared driver. We own the property, but we have they have the right to go in there. We have already called that that easement.
You own both properties?
No, no, just the one in question with the gray highlighted.
Right.
Area is ours.
So you want to use your entire driveway, though, for specific designated parking?
Not the nine-foot pass that goes all the way in and out that I have to leave open for our driveway and them to use. I'm not using the whole driveway. That nine-foot pass stays just as the passable for our cars to come in and for their cars to go behind into their house.
Okay, but it looks to me, I I say, okay, so.
See that passage?
Yeah.
The long passage that stays cleared. There's no parking on that.
Okay.
I must maintain that opening.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions? Nope. Okay, um, and I'm gonna remind everybody again that we're not having a this is not actually a public hearing. We're just hearing what your request is tonight, um, since we're all here. Get it that far. Okay, is there anybody present wish in favor or opposed? Okay, you guys can step aside for a minute. It might have question.
Yeah.
Might not. Come on down.
Hi. Uh, my name is Joe Keenan. I live at thirteen airs.
Can you?
Sorry, okay.
Very good. What was your name again?
My name is Joe Keenan. Um, I live at thirteen airs.
Hi.
Hello. Um, I'm I I want to understand exactly. What the proposal is. Is it to? Is it to pave? Is it to pave the driveway? Or is it just a zoning issue about how many cars can park in the driveway?
Parking, um, according to zoning, the parking has to have five feet of buffer landscaping.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, green, green area.
Yeah.
On on each side of the parking area.
Yes.
Uh, but if it to do that, it cuts into it would make any of those angled spots too small to use.
There. Is based on how I and my housemates are parking in the driveway as of right now. We have four cars. Permanently occasionally, we have a fifth. We park on that concrete slab.
How many how many cars you put there? Two or three?
We can fit two.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there is a good amount of ivy, like. Just growth vegetation that I think if it if that was removed, we might be able to fit. A third on that concrete slab, but we currently fit two um with a fairly wide berth. Um, and one car along the side of the house. As well as one behind the house where the um wooden stairs out the back door.
I think I think is the problem. Car be. Impedes the right-of-way for the neighboring house.
No, it's so the way the way the house is, it's sort of, um, there's a it's wider in the front than it is in the back.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we park sort of in that indent.
Mm-hmm.
So that that is still, uh, the the nine-foot pass is still very much clear. Um, our neighbors also have four cars. And their driveway cannot fit more than four, so they're forced to park halfway on the grass. That is next to their house.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in order for us to still be able to get out um and not have to block anyone in. So. I guess, like, I'm I'm just trying to, like, understand exactly. Um, what? This would change about. The.
It looks like they.
Did you see this?
I have not seen that. No.
That'd make all the.
Thank you. Yes, yes. Okay. Okay, yeah, we currently park in that snow storage area.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, and where it says, um, number four, that's where our neighbors are forced to park because they also have four cars. So, um. I'm just concerned about how they would fit. Their cars um and not be forced to street park.
I'm based on the drawings we're looking at to get you out from the congested area to get you further back behind the uh behind the house that you're in. If you're looking where the diagonal spots are.
Yes, yes, I'm I'm seeing who the diagonal spots are. I'm saying, um, the neighbors. Um.
And that that's very nice of you to be concerned, but that's not what we're here to talk about.
Okay, um. Perhaps if I phrase it differently, um. If they can't park in the driveway. If they can't fit all four of their cars in the driveway. They are either going to impede. The existing space that we have, or they will also be forced. To park on the street, which will not do anything for congestion. Because it will take one car that we have on the street. And just put two of their cars on the street.
That's not what we're here for, though. We're here for thirteen errors. We're not here for the fifteen errors or whatever number that is. So that's not a concern. For us, to be honest with you.
Okay.
I mean, that that's very thoughtful of you.
It is.
To be concerned about the neighbors, but we we can't address all properties at the same time. It's ours are a case by case, property by property. Yes.
So. I think what she's saying is that it doesn't look like eleven airs has a driveway that what they're using as a driveway is is. They have easement, I'm assuming, to use the driveway for thirteen airs.
Yes.
Which has to remain clear according to these drawings. Um, so so I think that's that's what your concern is. You you don't really care of where they park, but the fact of the matter is they won't have anything left.
Exactly. And.
But the the response to that, though, is that it it's the responsibility of the owner of eleven airs to make sure that that they they provide parking for their um tenants. And so. It's beyond the scope of the zoning board. It's something that the owner of eleven airs may have to sort out with the owner of thirteen airs if this driveway is no longer available. Um, but it's beyond the scope of of what the zoning board is looking at because they're just looking at thirteen airs.
Okay. Thank you.
But thank you for coming. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against? Okay. That discussion before we make a motion.
Nope.
Okay, then I would propose to table thirteen airs, uh, parking buffer until our next meeting. Uh, could I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Wait, okay, yes.
Just regarding the traffic direction.
Mm-hmm.
Um, based on my discussions with the owner. As far as cars backing out.
Mm-hmm.
Really not gonna change if this layout is approved. Cars are currently backing out.
Yeah, yeah.
They're gonna. They would need to anyway, so.
Yeah, I'm I'm familiar with the.
Yeah.
The west, the west side, many areas of the of Binghamton, there's a it's it's a challenge.
Yeah.
Um.
You guys never hear this, I'm sure.
Yeah. We're gonna get people driving smaller cars.
Yeah, yeah.
Much smaller cars.
Yeah. But that was all I had.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that'll be coming again in two to three weeks-ish. Thank you. All right, last case for the evening is forty-five Lathir Pav, uh, the Marchuska Brothers Construction, area variance per zero foot front setback. Where fifteen is the minimum requirement in the R one residential single unit calling district.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, council, and staff. My name is John Lynch. I reside at forty-five Lathir Avenue along with my wife, Ann.
Hi, John.
Ann could not be with us here tonight. She is home with an aide as Ann is wheelchair-bound after suffering Parkinson's disease for the last eight years. Over time, she had been able to negotiate the steps in and out of our house. But as many of you are probably aware, Parkinson's disease is a progressive illness. And despite Ann's continual exercise and taking her medications religiously. The disease is progressing. We come before you seeking a variance to build a wheelchair ramp. Which will allow us to intrude upon the front setback requirement in uh in our neighborhood. As you. Yeah, forgive me. As you are aware, zoning regulations came in the city of Binghamton after most of the homes. In our neighborhood were erected. So we have a shallow lot. And in order to be consistent with the Americans with Disabilities Act, as it is interpreted by the State of New York and the City of Binghamton. We need all of the depth we can get up to the the line. So with all of that background, I'm happy to answer any of your questions, but that is why Ann and I. Are before you tonight. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, John. Um. And I assume you got your builder?
Right here.
Hi.
Hi, I'm I'm James with Marchuska Brothers Construction.
I'm looking.
At twenty-seven twenty-two King Street in Endicott.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
I mean, to, yeah, to look at the construction on this, it looks like it's built to drive cars across. So it looks very well-built.
It looks solid.
Yeah, it really does. The construction looks phenomenal.
Any questions for the applicant or the or Mr. Marchuska?
Are any of your neighbors are objecting to this?
All the only neighbors I've spoken to, which are to the east and west of my house and two neighbors across the way are extremely supportive. And I have heard no objection at all, including, excuse me, from the dog walkers that's by my house.
That's all. Thank you.
Just I I can add to that. We did do a legal notice. We just messed up the newspaper part, but we did notify neighbors via mailing and with the signage, and we haven't gotten any comments.
Yeah, good. I don't have any question. Let's draw a poll.
Well, I was gonna I was gonna suggest that, uh. Because of the season changing and in the interest of time, if uh this you can't vote officially, but if you could give an indication to the applicant of where you stand, they can plan. And and try to make some steps in the right direction. Yes. It'll right to the sidewalk, yep.
Um, before we do, can I ask, is anybody here to speak for or against this application? Are you guys here to participate? Are you guys here to participate? You guys are just watching today? Class, all right. Way to go. Appreciate it. Yeah, we can uh we can discuss this. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Um, do you guys have any questions before they?
Um you you should, I'm sorry to interrupt, you should take a look at the criteria before you.
Yep. Let me get back to that. There are criteria we have to look at for um area variances. And once I get back to that. I don't know. Word is not happy with me right now. There it is. Okay. So we have to uh just the things we have to determine is, is it an undesirable change to grant this type of variance? Is there a reasonable alternative? Um is it a substantial request? Oh, whoops, back here. Uh is it is it adversely impact the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood and whether or not it was self-created? Um so we that's what we can discuss briefly because we're gonna get to it in in more detail, but as far as it being an undesirable change to grant this, I don't see this as being undesirable. I've I've seen a number of these in a number of places around uh the city and in other cities. Uh was there a reasonable alternative? No, I don't believe, I mean, no.
No.
There I don't want to think about the alternative. Uh is it a substantial request? Zero feet versus fifteen. If you're building a building up to the up to the sidewalk, maybe, but this is this is a ramp. So it's, I mean, it's the design looks pretty.
The design looks really great. I just I like it. I mean.
Interrupt me if I'm going, okay. Um and is it an adverse impact on physical or environment, environmental conditions? I think the fact that no neighbors have said anything and actually it's been positive feedback even from the dog walkers, and I know how hard dog walkers can be to please since I walk too big ones myself. Um I'm I'm willing to um share my feeling on this, um and this is not official, but I would I would be leaning towards approving this.
I I'd have to agree with you. I'd be leaning towards.
Yeah. So um we can't get to a public hearing. We cannot actually uh legally vote on this at this point. Um but I would encourage you to pursue your planning. Uh and we're before we go to tabling this till our next meeting, which will be, did we say the twenty-eighth?
Uh can be early.
Okay, the meeting can be as early as the twenty-eighth or it would be the next month, which would be one month from now. But just so you know, uh there's a there's a high likelihood that uh we would be voting favorably.
I appreciate that. Um Ann and I are very grateful. Thank you.
Well, thanks for coming.
My pleasure. Nice to meet you all.
Okay.
Good to see you again.
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I would, uh with that, I would like to make a motion to table um forty-five Lathir Pav for the um setback variance. Could I get a second? All in favor? Hi. All right, thanks. Um do we have any other business for us?
Yes, we have a new attorney here, Ryan Matt. He will be taking over for Elizabeth.
Hi, Ryan.
Hello, Ryan.
Are you new with the city or?
New with the city, but been around for a while. Uh started out at Legal Aid in two thousand eight, worked for Broom County Law Department until recently, and then uh switched over to Coughlin, and now I'm here.
Very good. Nice to have you.
Thank you. Nice to be here.
We'll do our best not to drive you crazy, although I can't speak for myself a hundred percent. They know.
I work in crazy, so it's okay.
Okay. All right, uh any other business? Welcome. And motion to adjourn. Could I get a second? All in favor?
Hi.
We are adjourned. Thank you.